Good evening. I would like to call the order the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, October 20th, 2025, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Councilor Parsons?
Here.
Councilor Kohler?
Here.
Councilor Cross?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Starr?
Here.
Council Christopher?
Here.
Council Duran?
Here.
Youth Councilor Gupta?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you are able, I ask you to rise and all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We will now go to our first item under Special Orders of Business, and it is our annual proclamation for Domestic Violence Prevention Month. Before I read the proclamation, I would like to invite up two very special guests to join us tonight. Brendan Murphy from our DA's office and Ashley Carson from the Center for Hope and Safety. I'd like to invite both of you up to the table up there and share with us about your work and also the importance of this proclamation and our work year round. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Red light on?
Thank you. Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor Clark. Hi, I'm Ashley Carson. I'm the executive director for the Center for Hope and Safety. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for raising awareness about domestic violence this evening. It really truly means so much to the people that we support in our programs each and every day at the Center for Hope and Safety. Last year, we had over 38,000 contacts to our programs, and we provided over 11,000 nights of emergency shelter to people fleeing violence, mostly with their children. I'm truly grateful for the partnerships in our community on behalf of survivors of domestic violence. It's been absolutely wonderful to work with Brendan and Paige at our DA's office, all of our local law enforcement across the county, and the Marion County Domestic Violence Council. In the words of a survivor that we recently helped, I wanted to tell you what she said. "Before I got to the Center for Hope and Safety, my life that I now have felt like an impossible dream. But this multifaceted support will help me continue to build a safe future, one that I never thought was possible. Now the future for me looks so bright, abundant, and safe. I get to finally meet parts of me that were scattered by survival, trauma, and fear." Just for anyone watching, if you need our services, please visit us at hopeandsafety.org, spelled out, or you can reach us on our 24-hour hotline at 503-399-7722. And just thank you so much again for this meaningful proclamation this evening. It shows survivors that there truly is hope and healing in their future and that their community truly believes in them.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. City councilors, good evening. My name is Brendan Murphy. I am the chief deputy in the Marion County District Attorney's Office. For those of you who don't know, we have five trial teams that specialize in specific types of crimes, and we have five lawyers who dedicate their professional career to prosecuting domestic violence only in Marion County. This is incredibly significant and important to our office because without strong families, we cannot have strong communities. And so I echo Ashley's comments. We really appreciate our partnerships in the community with the Center for Hope and Safety, with Liberty House, especially our law enforcement partners who investigate domestic violence every day. Last year, we had in Marion County three domestic violence homicide crimes. We had over 1,000 law enforcement reports cross our desks regarding domestic violence and over 800 filed cases. We received over 1,117 requests for protective orders through the courts, and we served through our Marion County Victim Assistance Division over 865 victims of domestic violence. So to say that this is an area where we need to pay attention is to put it lightly. And so I really appreciate, Mayor Clark, thank you for having us, as well as all of you for having us here today. And we would ask that you consider declaring October Domestic Violence Month here in the city of Kaiser. And with that, Mayor, I just want to say thank you again for your, this time this evening.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open for questions. If anybody has a question for our distinguished guests. Councilor Cross?
Thank you both for being here. And Ashley, I read not too long ago in the paper that you were accepting donations. Are you still accepting donations if somebody wants to drop some items off?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. We are accepting donations at our main office in downtown Salem at 605 Center Street, usually Monday through Friday, nine to five. Anything, we accept children's clothing, women's clothing, men's clothing, shoes. And we are frequently able to provide that to someone when they need it right away. They've usually fled with nothing but the clothes on their back, and so we're able to supply all of those types of things through donations from the community. So thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is, excuse me, is read the proclamation, and it'd be my honor to present each of you with a copy of this year's proclamation, which reads as follows: "Whereas the people of Kaiser believe that all people shall be treated with dignity and respect; and whereas domestic violence and abuse have no place in our community; and whereas active community support for domestic violence awareness and prevention and victim support services saves lives and creates spaces and a culture of safety and hope for survivors; and whereas Marion County through the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Public Health Department, and Domestic Violence Council provides significant resources for prosecution, prevention, education, and victim support services; and whereas our commitment to domestic violence awareness and prevention includes Kaiser Police Department training and regional law enforcement coordination and extends to community support for and volunteerism with partners such as Safety Compass, Center for Hope and Safety, and Liberty House Children's Advocacy Center; and whereas we know we each can make a difference by speaking up, raising awareness, reaching out to victims and survivors, and taking action to prevent domestic violence. Now therefore, the Kaiser City Council assembled here in regular session does hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and further commit ourselves to take action to end domestic violence in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, Domestic Violence Awareness Month." Did you plunk that over, didn't I? Is there a jar? Yes, please. Thank you. Bye. We are so thankful to have great partners like these two individuals and all of their staffs for taking care of people in our community. It is now time to announce the 2025 Holiday Card Contest winner and to... It's adorable. I know, seriously. And this is Ms. Biset?
All right. Mayor and city councilors, the Kaiser Public Arts Commission hosts an annual holiday card competition. They select one piece of artwork to be reproduced as the holiday greeting card. The winner also receives a $100 gift card to Michael's Arts and Crafts, and this year's winner is Kaitlin McDade, and her piece of art is a Christmas dog.
So is Kaitlin here tonight?
She is not.
Okay, she is not. I'm gonna put this up. I don't know if the camera can get it. There we go. So... Absolutely precious. So congratulations and thank you to Kaitlin, and if any of you feel now inspired to make your Christmas card and submit it for the 2026 card, the contest is still open until October 31st. So please look at this, get your dry materials out, and get your submission in by the end of the month. Congratulations and thank you to Kaitlin for a beautiful entry. And that will conclude our Special Orders of Business tonight. So we will now go on to our committee reports, and we're gonna start off with Kim Steen to talk about K-PAC, Kaiser Public Arts.
What's that? So, Kim Steen, I'm the current chair of the Kaiser Public Art Commission, here to report for last month's meeting, and it was a pretty short meeting. We don't have a whole lot going on right now, but we did welcome two new members. So we have our student liaison, Becca, no, excuse me, Cassidy Kerner, and she's a senior at Monary High School. I think we found her, or Lori found her, volunteering at the big toy refurbishing. And so I think she's wonderful. She's already working on the artwork for our holiday card contest. We're gonna kind of refresh that. So we also welcomed Jesus Escobar, and he is an artist, so we're pretty excited about that. He's a Salem artist. And I don't know who, probably, did Lori, did you bring him in?
He's been affiliated with Kaiser Art Association. I think he heard of it through there, but no, I didn't recruit him.
Okay.
But I know of his work, and he'll be fabulous.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited to see some of his stuff. So, what else did we do? We discussed the schedule, the upcoming schedule, and we had, we approved art from Rowan Sixkiller to be our featured artist for the November, the Native American Indian display. And so I haven't had a chance to go out there and look at it. I'm assuming they're hung, so are they? Okay, so I'm gonna do that when I'm done here. Let's see, what else did we discuss? I think just basically our schedule and reviewed our budget. We briefly talked about our, the master plan, and we're gonna be, I think that we're gonna be adding the street art to that. And so just looking through it, I think we noticed that there are a few things that we've already accomplished. And so just having new members, we're gonna go through and just kind of see if we need to update anything or add anything, or maybe move things around. I think that's about it.
Well, thank you. Good job. And does anybody have any questions for Ms. Steen? Councilor Christopher?
Thanks so much. I just want to remind folks, we have two positions open.
Yes, I did want to mention that.
We lost two in this cycle. So if you are an artist and you're interested in public art, we would love to have you join that committee. And even if you're art adjacent, like I am art adjacent and not an artist, we would love to have you join that committee. There's two positions open, and you can find those on the city website under Help, Melissa. And where can I, how can I apply for that position on that committee?
On our website, under Volunteer Opportunities.
Thank you. Under Volunteer Opportunities, that's where you can find it, and we'd love to have you.
And I did want to encourage people too, as Mayor Kathy Clark did, to make some submissions for art. I think we're, like I said, we're working on a new flyer to sort of get the word out, and also a flyer for the utility box art, and so just a call to artists. And I'm not sure, I was looking for the, for the date for the submissions.
For the Christmas card?
For the Christmas cards.
Yeah, we weren't sure.
I think it's actually a little bit later.
Did it get moved? One of the original flyers said at the end of October?
Well, I would encourage everybody to go to the website because now I'm questioning myself, but I was thinking it was January.
I thought it was too.
I think it'll be March 2nd.
Oh, better. That's what I thought. So you've got lots of time to get your art in.
Yeah, I'm trying to oot them along. Yeah, okay.
You'll be looking at the advertisement tomorrow at the meeting, and then, and then we should have information out.
All right. So we've got more time. But we want people to get it done now while they're all thinking and stuff is starting to pop up.
While we're getting in the holiday spirit.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, get those juices going. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right, Lisa? All right, Lisa.
Sajaka Parks. Hello, hello. I'm Lisa Sajaka. I live in Kaiser. And I'm the Vice Chair of the Parks Board. Madam Mayor, Councilors, Staff, it's so lovely to be able to address you. Tanya Hamilton was supposed to be here tonight, but I tripped her and so I could do it instead. Okay, I did not trip her. She had some things come up, so I am pinch hitting, pinch hitting. Which way is it? It's even baseball season and I don't know how to say these things. But I just recently learned that the Dodgers weren't in Brooklyn anymore. So I think, yeah, I know, 1957, I'm aware now.
Wow, okay. Twenty-first century.
You know, all right. So we had a lively Parks meeting. It was about two hours long. And we, we had interested and interesting citizens. Rhonda over there came and she brought to our attention that the, there was a Nike commercial that was, that was shot there over the course of 24 hours. And it didn't just use the ambient light from the field. It used a great big, a light of a thousand suns lights pointed directly into the neighborhoods. So that was, I mean, we felt that one. A couple of gentlemen came to talk about pickleball courts and how wonderful they are. And they had a few asks and they were saying that they needed to get something for shade, maybe some other things to build. And we told them about our Parks Grant Program. We still have $15,000 in Parks Board grants. And no one has applied yet, so if anybody is watching, please apply. There's $10,000 for just general Parks grants and then $5,000 that we reserve for youth grants. And that segued right into a Eagle Scout candidate, Daniel Nelson, who came up. And he is the person who did the garbage can holders that I just can't stop talking about. I love them so much. Just because walking in the park, I hate seeing trash. I hate seeing garbage cans full of water. I hate seeing all of that. And these holders hold it in place, keep the lid on. And it's got a little thing so that you can fit the lid up, put in the little pin and so that the Parks, the Public Works people can change the garbage without like a lid hitting them all the time. It's just, it's wonderful. And he came up to show us a little board that he had made that showed his progress. And it was really nice to have an update. I like it when Parks Grant awardees come back and let us know. Okay. And then, the meeting. So we had a lovely presentation by the people about the Parks Master Plan update. And it was so full of information and so full of pictures and ideas and possibilities that it was overwhelming. It, I mean, and I've been thinking for the last week just about what happened. Because it felt like we were making a decision right then when we aren't. So we did this, it made all of our brains get all foggy and fuzzy, even though it was still early in the evening. I mean, it felt like it was nine o'clock somewhere. And we voted to take care of it at the next meeting, to get our heads in a right space so that we could make a decision that serves our public and serves our community without feeling like, oh no, are we making the wrong choices? So that was what we decided there. Let me see. Oh no. Somebody turned on the thing. You know I like to talk. Let's see. And the last thing I wanted to share is, I'm only gonna take a second. And I know that this is gonna go off in 40 seconds, but I'm still gonna continue to talk. I'm sorry. I mean, I'm not sorry. I'm just letting you know. Palmasia is one of the parks that I report on. And I love that little park. When I first was on the park board, it was kind of ramshackle, tucked away. It was a little triangular piece of land that, I mean frankly, we talked about taking, I mean, in the last master plan, they talked about taking the park sign off of it and not having it a park anymore. And it's right on the river. And since that, the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association has done a lot of projects. And we've put a lot of love. Austin, last summer, made some repairs from an Eagle Scout project on the path down to the river. That is gorgeous. It has held up beautifully. But this September, former Councilor Reed had a group of people get together to do a service project. And they picked Palmasia. And they put new chips down. They cleared out a lot of the dead wood that has accumulated through different high water seasons that was really a fire danger. They widened the paths and made even the kind of sketchy path where you don't know what's around any corner. That is, it's delightful. It is beautiful. And I hesitate, I mean, I told the Parks people that I hesitated to talk about how wonderful it was because I don't want it to get mobbed. But if you want a nice little park, it doesn't have any play structure. It doesn't have, it has some picnic tables, it has an osprey nest. And it has a lovely path that you can walk down to the beach without, or well, yeah, it's the beach, the riverbank, without going on a little, a bunch of switchbacks. So it's beautiful and I would, I think everybody should go there. So anyway, that's all I have to say tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Question, and I know the answer to this, but I'm pretty sure. The pavilion, well, the master plan report that was presented at the last meeting, that's available on our website for people to access. Is that correct, Mr. Lawyer? Okay. So anybody who's curious about what this wonderful presentation was, you can go look at it. It's in the Parks Packet. And you can also review it. And of course, we'll be taking feedback from people as well.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, the concepts, all the concepts were beautiful. It's just...
It was a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot, yeah.
Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The group that former Councilor Reed put together, do you know who they were?
No. I only know it was former Councilor Reed because I twisted Robert Johnson's arm and he told me.
I believe it was the BYU Alumni Association.
Okay, well, that would be nice. I mean, I know it was a smaller group. It was nothing in, you know, the, the size or scope of the groups that you have gone together. No, I'm, I mean, I'm not sorry because you know what? It means that everybody, everybody gets a chance to make a difference. And you don't have to have 100 people to do good work.
But I'm pretty sure that was the group that she put together.
But I know that they have done projects that weren't necessarily outdoor projects in the past. And they wanted to do something outside and they picked Palmasia because it was a manageable size. So, and they did such fantastic work. As did your group.
Awesome. Anything else that people have questions, comments? All right, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
And thank you, Councilor Duran, for coming and sitting in for Marlene, or Councilor Parsons. We enjoyed having you. But, but Councilor Parsons, be at the next one. We'll see you then, okay?
Thank you so much. Fausto Ramos for, from Ramos, sorry, for the Community Diversity Engagement Committee.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Fausto Ramos. I am the Vice Chair for the Kaiser Community of Diversity Engagement Committee. Oh man, that's all the time we got. Let's go. Dang, we're out of here. No. I almost got out of that. So yeah, at our last CDEC meeting, a couple of things came up. We had talked about a flyer that you guys should have probably seen. And a lot of edits happening to it. One of the things that we've discussed is getting a chance to, on the front or back of this CDEC Invitational Card, informational is having a QR code allowing people to get to the Kaiser website a lot faster for the volunteers. I mean, the technical, technology revolution, like we just gotta get ahead of that. So one of the things that we're finding is a theme right now is we're coming to the end of the year. The CDEC Council is a two-year dedication. And we really feel like we haven't done a whole lot, unfortunately. But this next year, what we've planned is to just get our name out there. Just get the community to understand what we're doing, who we are, and that they can also get involved. Right? That's, that's the whole, the engagement is getting people in it. I think the most we've had in attendance at one of our meetings is like seven people. So, but we wanna, you know, we're trying to pull more people into that. At the, at our last meeting, we had a appearance of interested persons, Ms. Janet Johansson. And she had brought up something that was actually pretty, I was unaware of. I think maybe some of our committee was unaware of, is sign language interpreters. We had them at our CDEC Committee Meeting. But she had brought up that she had gone to like Kaiser Fest and like speakers on stage. She, there wasn't an ASL interpreter for that. Also, the movies in the park in the summertime, there wasn't closed captions on those movies. So we had a conversation about like, how do we, who do we contact for that? And how do we get, you know, that kind of thing available to them? Because that's just something that's nice, right? That community that's coming in, obviously she presented herself at the committee meeting. But there's other people in the community, in our neighborhood in Kaiser, that are going to these events in the summertime who want to be involved. So it's just, we're doing our own little research and finding out how many ASL interpreters are there in Kaiser or Salem? And how can we get them involved in finding out what their offices look like for volunteer hours? So I believe we have two people kind of working on that right now, kind of just as a little side thing to figure out.
Can I press pause real quick?
Yeah.
The other is also the continuing emerging technologies that are available to us. And more and more of them are becoming compatible with systems that we use. So the more information we have to continue to take advantage of those that are even more and more readily available will be helpful. So just want to make a plug for that as well. The personal touch is great and the technology is getting pretty amazing.
Yeah, absolutely. And then we had our discussion on our town hall thing, like where we're having our big meeting offsite. There was a conversation of having it, in the early days when we first started a couple of months ago with CDEC Committee, there was a conversation of having it sometime in March. And about two meetings ago, we were wondering why we're maybe waiting so long to do that. And so we decided last meeting that we would try and shoot for January, start of the year. We're looking right now at the Southeast Kaiser Community Center because they are ADA approved, they've got Wi-Fi. And Tammy Coons has actually already received a waiver of liability for that community center. So we're kind of trying to make it happen before December, just have a place ready to go. So, and then we had moved that date, I believe, sorry. January 22nd, so you guys are all invited. So you're all invited, January 22nd. And then, one of the last things we had talked about was the upcoming November 3rd meeting. Larry Porter was lining up a Mr. Kevin Dial to come speak about Veterans Affairs. So that is already on its way and, yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Ramos?
Good, good job, Fausto.
Hey, did I turn really red?
All good. Thank you so much. And thank you for getting that date on our calendars now. Things fill up pretty quickly, so we want to make sure we make ourselves available. Thank you. That's, we're gonna now go, anybody else for a committee report before I go to Neighbor Association? Mr. DeBlossy?
My apologies for not filling out a form. Madam Mayor, Council, Staff, I am presenting for the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee. We didn't, I wasn't able to come to the last, or after the September meeting. So this will be a combined September, October meeting update. So we do have a new liaison as well, a youth liaison, Lazlo Montoya Mendoza. And because he's a sophomore, we're hoping we're gonna get a few years out of him. Some of the things that we talked about at both meetings really were the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association came with some concerns about speeding and unsafe conditions. At the last meeting, it was brought up that there was someone who works at Kaiser Station and was biking to, into Kaiser Station, but at the, at the traffic light by Jamala and Lock Haven. And apparently was hit by a car while they were in the bike lane. Not a hospital visit injury, but certainly an injury that caused them to, to have to go back home and not work that day. So we talked about issues like that, about trying to make the, the street conditions safer. And that's led into a conversation about our, our green paint for bike lanes that we've talked about. And we, we brought to budget last year and we're going to do it again this year. I created a, a master list of all the, pretty much every possible and maybe even unlikely place to put green paint. And we had a little survey of the committee members and voted. And the top two came out to what we had had presented last time for Lock Haven by River Road. Let's see here. Another thing we've talked about is, so in addition to this list of, of green paint for bike lanes, we're talking about creating a list of safer pedestrian crossings, particularly on, on roads like River Road. Hersh Sankster reminded me that, oh, probably around 2017, I had created a list with another former member. So now I have to dredge that one up. But I think it'll be a good starting point. And then we'll do similar where we'll vote on them and present them eventually to, to counsel for the Budget Committee.
To do what?
To create a safer pedestrian crossing across the more heavily trafficked roads. River Road is one of those really busy streets. And we've also talked about working with Public Works and police to, to have a list of priorities, streets that they could give us data for that would help feed into deciding where to put these safer infrastructure additions. At the last meeting, Committee Member Lamb brought up that Salem had had this survey for, for safe streets and included a public, a survey where you could actually put dots on a map and put a comment in there. And so we're, we're thinking about doing something like that too. Obviously, the technology beyond that is beyond me, so we'll be relying on city staff for, for their time. Let's see here. And that's, that's pretty much it. It's, it's been a lot of the same conversations about the safer bike lanes, safer crossings. And like I said, we got the, the results from that, from that survey. So I think that's, we're still gonna have a list of other streets. So as we do paint, we'll have, mark those off and go to the next one on the list. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. DeBlossy?
So I do have one. Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day is coming up on November 14th. And there's going to be additional activities and so forth around Safe Routes of School. And any help, especially with the helmet programs and so forth that go with that would be very, very much appreciated. Especially looking at the budget for Safe Routes of School. There's more places they want to serve. And everything that the members of your committee and the members of our community do to help that out, it goes a lot farther. So I just want to give a big fat plug for that.
Yeah, and you actually reminded me of two things. So we have the pedestrian, the Pilot Pedestrian Flag Program. We haven't gotten a whole lot of feedback on it, positive or negative, I suppose. Is, you know, it goes, any information back is good, but it seems to be working. We just added by Kennedy on Kaiser Street by Nora, Noreen?
Noreen.
Noreen. And there's one on the one side where there was already a pole. And it sounds like city staff will be putting one on the other side, so you can actually have a place to put it when you cross. And then we talked about how in the past we've applied for Safe Routes of School money for Kennedy. And we probably want to do that again.
Well, there's not gonna be a lot, big budget for that, for the Safe Routes of School program statewide. So the local partnership is going to be even more critical.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anything else? Anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports before I go to Neighborhood Associations? Okay, Rhonda, Rhonda Rich for West Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
Good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council and Staff Members. Uh, my name's Rhonda Rich and I'm here tonight, uh, as President of the Neighborhood, West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. Um, just, um, a lot of things happening this October. I just wanted to give you a brief report and, and do a little closing. But, uh, October 6th, we attended the Kaiser Fire District Open House. And all the Neighborhood Associations were well represented. Uh, I think it was a good thing we were in the, the community, um, hall, I guess you'd call it, where they were serving the food. And we all had trinkets or, or candy to attract the kids in, to get the parents in. So, um, it was well attended. Um, we got one sign up, but I think it's really good for us to get out there and make ourselves known. Um, on October 9th, uh, we had our meeting and, uh, Shane, uh, came in and was our guest speaker. Lot of information there, development at Kaiser Station, middle housing, we're getting a Burgerville in our neighborhood. And, um, and talking about the floodplain. And, uh, Council President, uh, Shani Starr was there and she gave, gave out a lot of information. There were, even though it was on a development, there were questions about police department staffing and, and Little League and garbage fees. And she was wealth of information on that, so thank you. Um, October 14th, uh, Carol and I did attend, uh, the Parks Board Meeting, uh, the, the presentation on the pavilion. So we're going to have a discussion at our November 13th, uh, Neighborhood Association Meeting. Kind of go over just what the consultant laid, laid out. And, uh, Matt Lawyer will be helping with that presentation. Um, also Stacy Perry will be at our Neighborhood Meeting, uh, that meeting, November 13th. Tomorrow night, Trashy Tuesday at Wallace House Park, uh, 5:30 to 6:30. So I'll be there and I hope the other people show up. It's supposed to be nice weather, kind of the end of our sunny days, I think, for a little bit. Um, October 28th, we're going to participate in the Spooky Harvest Festival at Cummings Elementary School. And this is, uh, through Cummings Elementary PTA and the Neighborhood Family Council. So if you, you know, I think you all know that Cummings has the Neighborhood Family Council. It's a, a great group of people who have some money to do things at the school. So it's really focused for the Cummings students, it's not really a, a community-wide thing. Um, but, um, Linda mentioned, uh, today I found out, we had some vandalism at Willamette Manor Park. We have a brochure box there that's right next to the sign on Fifth Avenue, the, the park sign. And somebody had just hit it. And, and two months ago, and I reported this one two months ago in August, um, it was just, the box was just broken in half. And so I did report it to the police. So, uh, I did let, uh, send an email to Officer, um, Quintero, I think it is. Yeah, or Sergeant, okay, sorry. Um, and, uh, hope to get some feedback on that because there is a camera there at that park that points, right? That we should catch that. And hopefully, you know, we can deter this from going any farther because the fences on the north side of the park, I think it was about a year ago, were, were tagged. So we want to prevent any of that. Um, so, um, let's see, the website, I like the website improvement. Took a little while to get used to it, but, um, there's a heading, community, and all the Neighborhood Associations are listed there. So it's really cool. So thank you for, for doing that. Um, and lastly, um, I want to say the Manbrun Avenue Speed Limit Sign was put in last Monday. And the residents there are very excited about it. So I would just want to thank you for approving that, for supporting them. Um, I think maybe as a Neighborhood Association, we may come up with some out of our budget too. I'm gonna talk to the board about this, about getting some slowdown speed signs, just yard signs, like that. Then when people come forward and they feel like there's, you know, speeding on their street, kind of to give them something to feel like something, you know, being done. But they really do appreciate that, that sign. So thank you, Bill and City Council for approving that. And that's all I have.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Rhonda? All right, thank you so much, really appreciate it. Any other Neighborhood Associations tonight? Okay, Youth Counselor, Guptal. Any updates tonight?
I do not. I do not.
All right, thank you so much. That concludes committee reports. We'll go to public comment. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearing scheduled this evening. And I have, um, David Filbrick signed up to talk about item 9D, 9B. Come on down.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, City Councilors, Staff Members. My name is David Filbrick, I'm a citizen of Kaiser. I, I'm, um, wanted to present some testimony in support of lowering the speed limits in residential areas to 20 miles an hour. I serve as one of the citizens on the Volunteer, uh, Kaiser Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee. Over the past year, we have heard, um, citizen concerns regarding perceived unsafe traffic conditions and speeding on many of Kaiser's, um, streets, including Verta, Manbrun, and Park Meadow. Each of these has followed a similar and now anticipated progression. Uh, we hear the concern. Kaiser's Police Department, um, does a speed study, uh, which shows that the average speed in the 25 mile per hour zone is close to 30, with very few cars going over 35, which is a, um, level at which they, uh, might issue citations. Um, it has concluded because of this, that relative to the posted speed limit, um, that there is not a speeding issue. The concerned citizens are thanked and nothing further is done. In residential areas, the streets are part of people's front yards. They are used by adults and children going to school for walks and to meet neighbors. The residents of half of the houses typically cross the streets six days a week to get their mail. Uh, for unprotected citizens, cars are potentially lethal with the potential danger and lethality increasing with speed. Road noise also increases with speed and is a significant detriment to the local environment in a residential area. As Kaiser's housing density has increased through development and infill, the traffic density on our streets has increased. With greater traffic density comes increased risk and impact to individuals living along our streets, leading to a decline in safety and livability that is perceived, both perceived and real. Um, there's a significant difference between the perception and real risk from vehicles traveling 25, 30, or 35 miles per hour. With a 20 mile per hour posted speed limit, I believe that the average traffic speed would be around 25 miles per hour. And the real and perceived safety and livability of our seat, streets would be noticeably improved. In order to improve safety and livability, many communities in the United States, including Salem, are deciding that 20 is plenty. I encourage you to make Kaiser a better place for people as well as cars and adopt this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Filbrick. Appreciate your testimony. Any questions at this point? And we will be discussing this under item 9B.
Right.
All right, thank you very much. That's everybody I have signed up for public comment. Was there anyone else who wanted to address the council tonight under public comment? Okay. With that, we will go to our consent calendar. Council President Starr, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Consent calendar items read. Item A, approval of the October 6th, 2025 regular session minutes. Item B, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with West Coast CIPP Supply LLC for storm drain rehabilitation in Candlewood Drive Northeast.
Thank you very much. Do, does anybody want either of these polled? Saying none, Council President Starr?
I move that, uh, council adopt the consent calendar as read.
Second.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. None absent. Okay, I just had to get that in there. We've had a lot of travelers. All right, let's go to administrative action. Item 9A, which is resolution amending the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, amending resolution number, um, R. 2012-2256 and repealing resolution 25, 2025-3553. Mr. Wood?
Uh, Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our Public Works Director, Bill Lawyer.
All right, Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee requested and received City Council approval to propose a name change at their August 4th, at the August 4th, 2025 regularly scheduled City Council meeting. At the Thursday, August 21st, 2025, meeting of the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, a motion was passed unanimously recommending the City Council change the current name of the committee from the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee to Kaiser Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Safety Committee. Council approval is required to change the name of any City Council authorized committees. The name is set by resolution and so it must be changed by resolution. Staff identified alternatives of adopting the attached resolution, changing the name as recommended by the committee. Take no action and keep the name unchanged or choose a different name for the committee. Staff recommends the City Council adopt the attached resolution. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Lawyer on the report or the materials provided? Okay. Um, so we can move in one of these three directions. Does anybody want to put a motion on the table or, um, on this issue? Counselor Christopher?
I'll put a motion on.
We will again need your microphone, please.
Okay. Uh, well, I would like to put a motion, um, on the table, but it's different from the motion that is proposed. And, and here's my rationale. I would like to propose that we rename-
We have to, we have to do the motion and then we can speak to the motion, if you would, please.
I would move that we rename the, what is it currently?
Traffic Safety Bicycle.
To Transportation Safety Committee. Just Transportation Safety Committee. And I would look for a second.
I will second that.
Okay.
Um, let's speak to your motion.
Thank you. And here's why. A modern and comprehensive name reflects a unified mission. Transportation today, excuse me, is not limited to cars, bicycles, and walking. It includes all modes of getting from one place to another. E-bikes, e-scooters, and we, we don't even know what's yet to come. Um, by using the term "transportation safety," the city acknowledges the evolving landscape of how residents move around our city and ensures the committee remains relevant as new technologies and mobility options emerge. I called, uh, Counselor Starr the other day and said, hey, don't forget there's a, there's golf carts too. Because we have golf carts on the roads. Um, it reduces confusion and redundancy. The current name Bicycle Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee can sound fragmented and overly specific. It may unintentionally imply that the committee only addresses those three categories, leaving out issues such as transit safety, parking design, school zones, emergency vehicle access. A single streamlined title communicates that all transportation safety concerns fall under one coordinated effort. Three, it aligns the best practices with regional consistency. Many cities and counties, including Salem, Corvallis, Eugene, and Portland, have adopted a broader committee titles like Transportation Safety, Transportation Advisory, to reflect a comprehensive, multimodal approach. This alignment improves inter-agency coordination, grant competitiveness, and public understanding of the committee's purpose. And last, mm, well, maybe not last. Um, the other, uh, four, it enhances public engagement. Residents seeking to report and discuss any transportation safety concerns often don't know which category their issue falls into. Is it a traffic issue? Is it a pedestrian issue? A unified Transportation Safety Committee offers a clearer point, encouraging more community participation and reducing barriers to engagement. It further proves the committee's purpose. As a transportation continues to evolve with electric mobility, autonomous vehicles, and changing land use patterns, the city's advisory structure should be adaptable. Transportation Safety provides a flexible umbrella that can grow with the city's needs without requiring another name change in the near future. Therefore, I would propose that we change the name of that, of our Citizens Advisory Committee to Transportation Safety. The end.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor President Starr?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to that motion and, um, suggest that it be the Multimodal Safety Committee.
I would, I would not accept that at this time, but if there's not enough support for transportation safety, I will absolutely support that as the second alternative.
Do you want to speak to your ideas?
I think that transportation, um, and you, and you even mentioned it in your rationale, you mentioned multimodal.
Mm-hmm.
I think when you hear transportation safety, I, I think, I immediately think of cars. Um, and I know you, you talked about the different types of transportation. I think multimodal is kind of what we're hearing and what there is a movement towards in terms of terminology. We, even when we did the, uh, the, the Wheatland Road planning, um, they talked about a lot of the, the planning that went into that referred to it as multimodal um, in that, in that plan that was done. So I just, I think that multimodal is more reflective, um, of everything. I think it's kind of the term that is being used in transportation and traffic work, um, today and, and the planning. So I would suggest multimodal.
So what you could, um, since the friendly amendment was not accepted, do you want to put that on the table as a, um, amendment to the motion?
Don't we have to vote on the motion?
Uh-uh, you can, you can vote to amend the motion. And then we'd go back to the original, if it was amended or if it was not amended, then we go back to the original motion. So there are, there, motions can be amended by a quote friendly amendment, which is we all agree that it goes in there. Um, if we don't all agree, then the mover can move and second, and then that's a separate vote prior to the, um, the final vote. Does that make sense? So.
So I would put a motion on the table to amend the motion to read Multimodal Safety Committee.
Looking for a second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to amend the motion to change the name of the committee to Multimodal Safety Committee. So speaking of this, right now the discussion is centered on this one. And then depending on what we do, then we go back to the original motion, um, to conclude that. Any comments on multimodal? I see the wheels turning. I'm sorry, that wasn't supposed to be a joke, but it was. Wow, wow, I went there. Counselor caller?
It's my second one of the day, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for noticing there are still wheels there.
You're welcome.
Wow. Okay, so my question is, why are we changing it in the first place? What's the matter with Traffic Safety Bike Pet? I was on that committee for, for four years and it worked just fine. I'm, why, why are we changing? I'm, I, I'm not seeing any reason.
Is there, is there an answer?
Um, it was, uh, to my knowledge, it was requested by the committee. Well, they came to us and said, we would like to change it.
We said yes.
And we said, yes, go ahead and have that conversation. This is, this is the recommendation they came back with. And clearly from the motion, um, and the amendment on the table, that we probably want to go a different direction, if anything at all. We do have the option to say no or leave it as is. Does that help answer the question?
Well, the option to leave it as is, we just vote no.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yep, got that one.
There are still wheels. That's, that's the good.
Two, three, or four? Or 18 wheeler? Or eighteen wheeler. Okay, I do have one comment, and that, aside from my very punny start. For me, no matter what we name this, safety is job one. And so one of my concerns with the proposed rename is put safety last, and to me, it's safety first. That said, I know that that's not the first word in this phrase either, but transportation safety, that's a construct that really emphasizes that in however we travel, safety is how we want to make sure that our systems, our engineering, our programs, all of that are for the safe, safe passage of people from point A to point B in whatever mode they choose to use. So for me, safety is job one. Whatever we land on, that's job one. Anything further on the proposed Multimodal Safety Committee as the alternative name? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no.
No.
Motion fails. The ayes were Parsons and Starr. Back to the original motion of Transportation Safety Committee. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no.
No.
Okay, roll call.
Counselor Parsons?
No.
Counselor Kohler?
No.
Counselor Cross?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
No.
Counselor Starr?
No.
Counselor Christopher?
Aye.
Counselor Duran?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay.
So now we, I'd like to go back.
We're going to leave it as is, as at this point. So we want, we just voted no on the original, on the first motion.
Understand.
Okay, and?
I would like to make a motion-
Okay.
-that we change the name of this committee to the Multimodal Safety Committee, which this is the point I was trying to make. If there wasn't support for transportation safety, because we could never talk to each other anymore, because there are laws against that. So we had no idea how anybody was going to vote. I would definitely throw support behind multimodal, and I feel that there would be support on this City Council to do that if we take another vote at that.
I just don't know how to make- I need help at this point.
Yeah, well, so technically, if this is a motion to reconsider-
Okay, great.
So then-
It takes three fifths.
Just double check on what the, because that was a question that just came before, and motion to considers are allowed, but-
It's three fifths, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think somebody has to change their vote, right? So if one of, somebody has to propose it who-
Was on the prevailing side.
Yeah, but, but I guess now that, now that you've prevailed it, right? Because you voted against multimodal to begin with. So you proposed it. Now there has to be a separate vote on whether or not you want to reconsider it before you actually reconsider it.
So the motion is to reconsider?
Yes.
So I would move to reconsider the change of this committee to Multimodal Safety.
Second. Moved and seconded to, for reconsideration. This is one that's done without debate, sorry. All in favor, please. Point of order.
Point of order. Can we, can I question what we're actually doing here? Sorry, can I question what we're actually doing? Because I, the point of order is just, what, can she make the same, can she make a motion to reconsider if she voted for it?
She didn't vote for it. No, she didn't vote for it.
She, she, the person making the motion to reconsider can say, at the same meeting, they can say, actually, I would like to reconsider because I voted against it, and now I would vote for it. So that's how that comes about. That's why I first asked the question, did she vote for it or against it to begin with? And because she voted against it, and now she's voting, or would vote for it, she can make the motion to reconsider.
Thank you for the clarification.
Point of order, also, please.
Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the original one was just multimodal, what Counselor Christopher was saying, multimodal safety.
I said multimodal.
No, she said Multimodal Safety Committee.
You did?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, I just wrote down multimodal. Okay, my bad.
Okay. Wheels weren't turning evidently.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to vote-
Any other points of order, any other point of order before we take the vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no. No. Motion passes 5-2, which is the requirement.
Just to reconsider, yes.
For the reconsideration. Now the motion goes back on the table, and that was the motion to change the name of the committee to Multimodal Safety Committee. Any discussion? Counselor Christopher? Okay, you have that look of-
Do we have a first and a second?
Okay, Counsel Kohler.
Do we need to make it Kaisers instead of some other cities? We're going to do that to everything, then.
Well, actually, half of them do.
Half of them have it.
Yeah, like K-PAC and the old Kaiser Points of Interest, on and on. If you want to make a motion to amend the motion, you are welcome to do so, Counsel Kohler.
I don't have enough wheels.
I'll take that as a no. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. We are renamed. All right, moving on. Thank you.
And just, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just as a point of clarification, so that you know, the resolution that you passed will stay the same. The, it will be Appendix A that changes, because that is where the name change actually appears. So, so you'll, you actually just passed the same exact resolution, but you are actually changing the name section of Appendix A. So just so you know.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Make sure we have that straight. All right. Okay, moving on. Well, we're talking about wheels on everything, going round and round. We're going to item 9B, Discussion Regarding 20-Mile per Hour Speed Limit. I believe this goes to Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Okay, I lost my place. City Council requests that staff research the implementation of a 20 mile an hour speed limit for all residential streets in Kaiser. In the 2019 legislative session, Senate Bill 558 was passed, which gave the city the authority to designate speed limits five miles per hour lower than statutory speed limits on non-arterial streets in residence districts. This allows the city to post residential streets at 20 miles an hour. The former Traffic Safety Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, I added former, that's not in the staff report, recommended that the City Council consider changing the residential speed limits from 25 to 20. This practice has been adopted by other Oregon cities, including Portland, Tigard, Lake Oswego, Eugene, and as was mentioned, Salem. Currently, all residential streets are posted at 25 miles an hour, whether there's a speed sign or not, which is a statutory speed. Statutory speed. Staff investigated how many speed signs, speed 20 signs, would need to be installed to properly designate all residential streets at 20 miles an hour. There would need to be 243 signs either replaced or installed citywide. Replacing and installing the signs would take approximately three and three quarters months to install all of them. This is two staff members working full-time on speed signs, while all other necessary maintenance work and other activities in the Street Division would be put on hold. Realistically, it would take 10 to 12 months to complete, given the other sign maintenance work, other activities, and the availability of the equipment necessary to install the Research on the Internet suggests opposition and support for changing the speed limit from 25 to 20. I listed a fair number of oppositions. I listed some, well, between Adam and I, City Manager and I, some studies. One of them was in Portland State for the, based on the inner city of Portland, a 2019 study, supporting the change. Some opposition as widespread disregard for the new speed limit, enforcement strain. I'm just picking a few that are better in the staff report. The purchase of the 20 mile an hour signs post and other hard costs are estimated to be about $46,650. This figure does not include staff costs, which are estimated to be about $35,000, for a total of about $81,650 to change this, to put the speed signs up citywide. Let me clarify that. Currently, not currently, the state law requires you to post a speed limit when you go from a street that has one speed to a different speed, okay? So our collector streets, a lot of those are posted 25 miles an hour. Well, any residential street you turn off of or onto off that collector do not need a speed sign. Now, they will if this goes into place, okay? So that's, just explain the number of signs. Because I, I know I thought initially, there's no way we have that many speed signs. Well, we don't, because we don't need them. So make sure, I wanted to explain that real quick. Timing of this is at the discretion of the council. It does take council direction to implement the 20 mile an hour speed limit on streets in Kaiser. Staff has looked at alternatives, identified to want to hold a well-publicized public hearing to provide residents an opportunity to provide written and verbal testimony on the matter. Consider implementing the 20 mile an hour speed limit citywide on residential streets. Consider implementing the 20 mile an hour speed limit on selected residential streets, or take no action at all. Staff recommends the City Council schedule a well-publicized opportunity to hear from residents about changing the residential speed limits from 25 to 20. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counsel President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure. I-
Throw out to the universe.
Yeah. Thank you for the work that went into putting this together to all staff. I'm not sure who this question gets directed to, so I apologize. So as the council leads on to the now Multimodal Safety Committee, I hear and see the residents coming in and, and expressing concern for speeding. So to me, there is a problem. Whether it's, an opinion is that perception, it's the perception that people are speeding. Perception is people's reality. So we want our, our residents to feel safe in their neighborhoods, and we've had a significant number of people come forward to the Traffic, sorry, Multimodal Safety Committee, expressing concern about speeding going on in their neighborhoods, et cetera. So with respect to the recommendation, or with respect to the information in here, what other options do we have other than changing speed limits?
Well, in my experience, dealing with speed complaints at the Multimodal Safety Committee level-
Good job.
Yay.
Had to think that one through for a second. The wheels had to spin up on that one. When a formal speed study has been done, they almost never identify a true speeding problem. That tells me that this is mostly a perception problem. I'm not, I'm not saying there's not safety issues involved. I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is, the studies show there is not a speeding problem, okay? And the speeding problem, if you will, is identified at, as primarily people doing more than five or seven miles an hour over the posted speed limit, okay? Within a certain percentage, okay? So one way to make a difference, if you will, is to change the criteria in the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and lower the threshold, okay? So that a speed study that shows that the, the speed is truly 30 miles an hour says then that is a speeding problem. We need to do enforcement, we need to do whatever the case may be to change the behavior, okay? I, I have concerns by just changing the number on a speed sign, are you really going to slow the traffic down? Some of the studies that I referenced in here showed it really didn't work. Some did, okay? So it, but to really make a difference, I believe you would need to change the criteria in the program so that the studies that have been done historically show a true problem. That, then action can be taken, okay? Whatever that action is, whether it's a speed hop, a traffic circle, speed sign isn't going to cut it. That's not, that's not going to change behavior. It would be a traffic calming measure of some type, okay? And that would be determined on a case-by-case basis, and those all, of course, cost money as well, so.
Mr. Lindsay, now I'll go to Counsel President Starr for a follow-up.
Thank you. Because you asked the cosmos, I will chime in, because one thing came to mind, is one of the tactics or ways in which they tried to attempt to even have people pay more attention for construction zones and for school zones, was that they would double the fines when they broke those speeds at those places. Speeding still does occur. People get cited twice as much. I, I think when you do a blanket 20 mile an hour, I, I believe people are pretty habitual the way they drive. And I think when there are patterns, you know, people, when they leave for work late or they do whatever, so I, so I think you would have to either have some level of traffic calming or some enhanced amount of enforcement in order to change people's behaviors. What I believe, just from my career as a prosecutor for a while.
Thank you. Counsel President Starr, follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Get out of my head, Mr. Lindsay, because you just went down the road direction that I was going to go, so thank you for setting that up. I love it. I think this might bounce over to Lieutenant Hein, because Mr. Lawyer mentioned enforcement. Can you walk me through enforcing enforcement when somebody gets a speeding ticket? And like, how many, and this might be a bigger conversation for later, but in terms of data, but what happens? Somebody gets a ticket, and then does it obviously go to court, to our court here? And then does it get dismissed? Does the fine get reduced? Like, when we're talking enforcement, what, what does that look like for people?
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Other counselors, Madam Mayor, staff. What it looks like, I used to be a motor officer, not in the city of Kaiser, but another city. And what it looks like, enforcement and education can look different depending on the speed limit. So if we're dealing with a school zone, so that'd be 20 miles per hour, typically my threshold at the time for a citation, so that would be enforcement, would be 10, anybody going 10 miles per hour over that speed limit or more. Anything under that would be a warning. Obviously, there could be some wiggle room there. And officers somewhat set those thresholds for themselves so that they-
Really?
Yeah. So obviously, it's not anything, it's called officer discretion. So there's no mandate by the department, any department that I've worked for, that says, hey, if someone's going over 3 miles per hour over the speed limit, you shall issue a citation. But there is officer discretion there. If a citation is issued for violation of posted speed, then there would be a court date that would be on the citation, and that would be explained by the officer. And then the person, the driver, would be required to appear, and they would enter their plea after there was testimony also provided by the officer. Depending on the testimony given by the officer and the driver, the, the judge could decide to dismiss, reduce the fine, or incur the full fine amount on the driver. Also, depending on the municipal court, there may be some type of traffic diversion programs available. Does that answer your question, Counselor Starr?
It does, thank you.
So I wanted to follow up on one of the recommendations and the staff recommendation, and Mr. Lawyer, you mentioned something that I think is pretty critical for folks to understand, and doing a community outreach and conversation. Because as you said, this would be a change when we go from, let's say, collectors, minor arterials, our streets are all ranked by how they function. So a street looks like a street, like, looks like a street as you're driving along, but they actually are rated based on how they're supposed to function. So a collector is the one that brings everybody together before they go out into the really busy streets. And you said something really important, and that is, the collector change from collector to neighborhood, right now, they're all the same. But if we reduce them, there's going to be a change. And there might be an expectation on the part of people in the community that they're all changing, not changing, people are still racing down the street. Well- Well, it's a different speed limit because it's a different classification. I think that's going to be a really important part of this conversation with the community. I think we have to have realistic expectations about what this and other tools can do. The traffic management safety program with the tools available to us now, when the flashing speed limit signs on shoreline went in, big difference. That's my neighborhood. That worked. It is, now you're going to get the occasional individual that thinks that every road is their personal speedway, and for them, we have those full, full loaded tickets just waiting for them, which is fantastic. But for a lot of people, that's that reminder of, oh, I'm on a street that this is lower and they slow down. And we've done more and more of those. So I think a conversation about the tools available would be super helpful for our community before we commit to one solution. But this is a solution that is available to us, so that's the direction I'm leaning. But I wanted to give Lieutenant Hine a chance to offer, also respond. I read in the city manager's report now that for the first time in several years, our traffic safety unit is now fully staffed. Is this true?
Madam Mayor, that is true.
Woo, woo!
Our traffic safety officer, Jorge Miranda, will go back to the traffic safety unit effective tomorrow.
Okay, so there we go. So we're back to full staffing. That doesn't mean we're saturated, but we're at the full staffing level. So I thought that was very good news to share as well. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering what our youth counselor, Gupta, might think about this.
As a young driver, I think that's a wonderful idea. Lives on a very busy street.
So I've grown up riding my bikes down Park Meadow as long as I can remember. And personally, I have never felt unsafe down Park Meadow. And I mean, now I drive down there a lot, and you know, that like that was a place we would ride our bikes with our friends, go on walks, and I have never felt unsafe with the speed that people are going because they're not going 40 miles an hour down the road, you know? If they do go 30, like that is a little bit, that's not, I feel like that's, that's not horrible. Like, and if we were to lower them, that would cost a lot of money, and would it actually lower, like, no matter how many speed limits you put in, people, if they're speeding, they're not going to slow down, you know? That's kind of, that's kind of how I feel about this whole thing.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts on that. Appreciate that. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your insight. I haven't ridden a bicycle down Park Meadow for a while, although I have. It's been a while. But I think some of the things that Mayor Clark talked about are pretty valid points. I think for almost $82,000 and causing all kinds of problems with traffic and slowing some traffic down to where it's congesting things and causing more problems, causing more people, opportunity to come in to see our judge, may not be the total answer. I, I think using some of the flashing signs and things in, in spots that we feel are important would probably be a better use of our funds, so anyway.
Youth Counselor Gupta.
Park Meadow does have like yellow things on one of the speed limit signs, and it does, it does get your attention, so. I mean, that does help because I'm like, oh, I'm going a couple miles over, I better slow down. So those definitely help. They get your attention, so that could definitely be, be better.
Okay, thank you. Any further thoughts? Counselor Christopher.
So what are the next steps? Where are we?
So I think that the next step, the staff recommendation is to do some public outreach and have more of a town hall conversation about what the options are that we have. We have speed limit, but we also have a lot of the traffic calming that we have adopted in our neighborhood traffic management program so people understand, you know, what might work in their neighborhoods. You know, what Youth Counselor Gupta mentioned, the ones in West Kaiser with our speed table and our flashing signs, there are some really effective changes we've made, and to have a conversation with the community about what might work in their different neighborhoods and let people know what the tools are. I think it's a good opportunity. I always, how many of us have heard from people, I want a speed bump? And you're going, no, you don't. You really don't. But let's talk about our options.
I mean, I...
Follow-up?
Thanks. I, I think that Counselor Starr is right, and also, Mr. Lindsay, when they said, you know, what's going to get their attention is the pocketbook. That's what's going to get their attention. And so if they're, I was surprised to hear that there's officer discretion. And I know that, you know, there's some streets that, in some cities, you know, if you speed on that, on that street, you're going to get a ticket and you're going to pay for it, and they're not going to, they're not going to give you a warning. You're going to pay for that ticket. And I don't know that we have been really vigorous or vigilant in going to that point. I think we've been kind and trying to educate first, but I don't think that that is potentially working. I think that we may need to get a little bit more strict on administering fines and making sure that folks are paying for it. So that's my thoughts on it.
So is there consensus to go ahead with having an educational community conversation on this issue so people can understand what we're talking about and weigh in with their, with their preferences, and especially inviting the people who have been to Traffic Safety Bike Pad, now known as, otherwise known as, to also come in and be part of that conversation? I'm going to go, Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I concur with doing the educational outreach in the town halls. I would ask that in, in addition to talking about what these different options are, we look at how we can talk about the real concerns about safety and speeding in the community because it's, it's a real issue. So I think in addition to these three options, we need to talk about the importance of following the speed limits and what can happen, and then we need to follow through on that. So I would just ask that we go a little bit further in those town hall conversations and kind of double down on that education about the speeding.
I've got an idea to go with that, to talk with our city staff on recommendations for public outreach, communications, and so forth on speeding, especially as we're getting into the darker part of the year. I know that our social media, you're really good at getting out messaging, and as our budget allows, really encourage getting a higher level of social media out there that we want to take this very seriously for slow down, watch out for safety and so forth. So does that feel like a, one of the steps we want to encourage staff to take? Counselor Christopher.
Is it too late? We're working on that survey. Is it too late to add a question?
I don't think so.
Or two? Do you know, Tim?
Madam Mayor, City Council, we're still at the early stages as far as the survey goes.
Let's add a question about that. Let's start there before we have our town hall.
Bingo. So let's do that, and also the public, public service announcements, get that out there. And the last is what I heard from Mr. Lawyer was taking, going back to the multimodal safety committee on changing the criteria in the, in the neighborhood traffic management program for the threshold criteria. We agreed to make that recommendation for the committee to take that into consideration. By consensus, we would like to do that as well. So Mr. DeBlossy is still here, and Mrs. Bissett, and Mr. Philbrick. So thank you very much for that. Anything further on this at this time? Okay, good work. Let's go to item 9C, which is resolution appointing municipal court judge pro tem. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm going to turn this over to City Attorney Joseph Lindsay.
Mr. Lindsay.
Yeah, this is my pleasure to put this in front of the council. The municipal court judge who works for you has a couple of subs, the pro tems. And currently, actually, we thought we had two subs because in 2019, we had two subs, but more currently, one of those, he's no longer available to serve as a pro tem. So Mr. Aaron Heisel, who's here in the audience.
Hello.
It looks like he brought a son as well.
He's wondering who he was.
Has, has offered his services. He, we would know him, I've met him on various occasions, and he's actually helped out our city. He's also gone to the Supreme Court for his past, so he's actually a well-accomplished civil litigator, and so he knows the courtroom and now, and now he wants to give back a little bit and try to be a pro tem for us, which would be sporadic, but every once in a while, we do need him.
I love that. Awesome. Would you be willing to come down and introduce yourself, if that's okay with everybody?
And your assistant.
With or without your buddy?
It's up to you. But he is certainly welcome, and he's been so good.
He has been so good.
Well done.
And I'm hungry.
And you're hungry.
I think ice cream on the way.
We have snacks.
Mayor, counselor, staff, yeah, my name's Aaron Heisel. Like Mr. Lindsay said, I've been able to help out the city in litigation in the past. Most recently, it was actually a municipal court that got sued, so your municipal judge and I became friends through that. And that's kind of where the seeds were planted for this. This is not a financial move for me. It's not doing it total benevolence, but it is not, it's not a profit maker either. I'm comfortable and confident, and particularly the relationship that Mr. Myers and I have developed, that this will be a good thing going forward should you approve it, and that I'm a little younger than Mr. Myers, too. I think there's a piece of that that's also, you know, just part of that developing relationship. So I'm hopeful that it's long term. I live here in Salem, my office is here in Salem, and yeah, happy to answer any questions anybody has for me.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for coming and observing Judge Myers, who you may have heard at our last meeting, meeting before, got a very glowing review from our city council as we've been able to observe his work in court as well. Any questions for the judge, for the attorney? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, good job, young man, for being here with your dad.
Did you say thank you?
Yeah. All right. I love it. That's awesome.
Council President Starr, would you put a motion on the table, please?
Absolutely. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R2025, appointing municipal court judge pro tem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R2025, appointing municipal court judge pro tem. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9D, discussion regarding deem it important that Council Parsons appear electronically and be considered in attendance for November 3, 2025, city council meeting. Council rules of procedure, section 3.10, attendance duty. This item is being amended to reflect that this is for November 17. Is there any objection to that change for this agenda item? Seeing no objection, we will now discuss this as being in attendance for November 17, 2025. Any questions on this process? Council, Council President Starr, would you please put the motion on the table?
I move that we approve Counselor, to allow Counselor Parsons to appear electronically and be considered in attendance for the November 17, 2025 city council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council deem it important for Council Parsons to appear electronically and be considered in attendance for the November 17, 2025 city council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes administrative action for this evening. Other business this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Wood, does the staff have anything further tonight?
Not that I'm aware of, thank you.
All right, thank you. Council members, anybody have other business this evening? Okay, we will now go to staff updates. We'll start with Mr. Cleaver. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
If you're in the south side of town, save water. If you're in the north side of town, you have two more weeks to power wash your house. That's it, thank you.
All right, and the benefit of saving water is because?
We are in the middle of the sewer reset period, so your sewer rates are set annually. They are a fixed rate that stay with you the entire year, so it behooves you to save as much water as you possibly can now, so your annual rate is much lower and your pocketbook will be happy. So give out bottled water for Halloween.
Great suggestion, Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood, so where's the cutoff when you say north-south? Can you?
I was afraid you were going to ask that.
I know.
I'll have to look at the specific map area. So if you get your bill this month, then you're in the south part of town.
That's all I care about.
Okay. Remember, everybody, we have billed every other month. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Separate from water, we received an email from Griffin Walker about some challenges with the new website and redirecting and changing certain, certain links and such. Can you address that?
Good, good question. So we did go live with our new website a couple weeks ago. If you click on a link that was connected to our old website, it will take you to the main website homepage. It won't necessarily take you directly to whichever page that original link was connected to. And we are working with our website providers and our domain hosts to figure out how to get that page-to-page linking reactivated. We ran into some issues. It's not with the website providers themselves, but with the host of our DNS. I'm not going to get too technical, but we're trying to work through that issue now to see if we can get that up and running.
Follow-up?
And what's the importance of that?
The importance, not so much for us as the city, because we don't really have too many competitors providing police services or municipal court or, or water, those kind of things. If you're in private industry, it would be very important to maintain the search engine optimization, because when someone puts in water service, you want your name to rise to the top of the list first. However, for some of the people, some of the agencies that we deal with, neighborhood associations, that is somewhat important. When you type in northwest and you want to get to the Northwest Neighborhood Association, you want that to pop up higher on the list rather than lower on the list. So that's, that's the piece that we're trying to get back, some of that history.
Thank you. I do want to compliment the new website. It is much more intuitive, it's a lot easier to use, the mobile app also looks really, really nice, so I want to congratulate everybody who was on that team for doing a wonderful job on the redo of our website.
I'll definitely pass it along, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bissett.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Aren't you on that team? The website team?
Dawn Wilson was actually leading that team.
She loved that team. Well, excellent work.
Congratulations, Secretary.
Oh, thank you for the reminder. So somebody is now the secretary of the Oregon Association of City Recorders, and that would be you?
Yes, so I'll get to attend more meetings and take more minutes.
Oh, yeah, so good to go someplace. Congratulations, and I'm sure they're delighted to have you in that leadership role.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Hine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilors. I do have an update. It's going to be a staffing update this evening. So for the Kaiser Police Department, we just onboarded a lateral police officer today. We also have, we also onboarded an entry-level officer, but he, and I know that he was introduced, I believe, or sorry, not introduced to the city council yet, but he was sworn in by Chief Copeland on the 13th of October. But he comes to us with prior law enforcement experience, just has been out of the game for over five years, which requires someone to go back to the basic police academy. So I know he's stoked about that, but we've got three, we've got three entry-level officers at the police academy right now, and then we just... Uh, and then we just soloed, I believe we just soloed a lateral police officer that we got. Um, he's been going through training. And then again, as I, I just described earlier, uh, just onboarded his first day-to-day a lateral police officer. So we're working on getting back to our, our normal levels of staffing, or as close to. Uh, I do just want to throw out for community members here as well as everybody else that for the entry-level officers in the academy, it's sixteen weeks, and then it's roughly four months once they get out of the police academy for their field training, once they're back here at Kaiser Police Department.
It's extensive. Yep. But, um, congratulations on, um, continuing to ser, secure very high-quality candidates to serve our community.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Witham.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay.
Uh, I'll just quickly share, uh, beyond going, um, I got to go to the Employment and Labor Law Conference, uh, not this last weekend, but the weekend before, and then, um, or at the end of the week. And, uh, and then I got to go to three days of training at the county for free with Tim Wood. Um, we, we actually sat at the same table and did tabletop exercises for emergency. It was the ICS, um, three hundred series. And so, uh, I think in, in Marion County, I just wanted to give a shout out. We're really blessed. Our, um, uh, emergency manager, I guess is his title, uh, Greg Walsh is, is not only an excellent teacher, but just an excellent person to have around for emergencies. Um, he's been around, he's done it all, so, um, and, and responded to these things nationally and, uh, and such. So he was not only a good teacher, but like, ju, just fun to observe in the way that he thinks. So it was a really worthwhile endeavor. And I know that some of our staff are going to go on to the four hundred level here in December, so we're all trying to get as ready as we can, just in case, uh, bad things happen.
Be prepared. All right, thank you very much. Uh, let's go to council member reports. Start with Counselor Durban.
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Counselor Christopher?
Uh, I've been gone. I have nothing this evening.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Counsel President Starr.
Uh, I just want to say thank you, uh, to our police department. I know you're getting fully staffed, but leading up to that was a lot of, uh, heaviness on the department, um, and the, and the officers covering and making sure everything was covered and keeping our community safe. So I just want to recognize our officers that worked multiple overtime shifts, um, this past, I don't know how long, as you've, uh, gotten fully staffed. So please pass on my thank you and gratitude to all of them and their families.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Beautifully said. Counselor Cross.
Nothing to report. Just been out traveling for work, so good to be back.
Welcome back. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. Uh, I got to be, uh, Counselor Parsons of the Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association. They said that they'll have a T-shirt for me next time I need to sub. Um, but it's really fun. They're, they're a great group, very well organized. Stacy Perry came and talked about some, the environmental coordination that needs to go on and goes on all the time. Um, there were, there were some questions about graffiti on mailboxes and how that works. And so I'm not sure all the answers to that. I told them to call you. So there you go. Um, there was a pretty good discussion by, uh, Griffin Walker about, about the new website and how great that is and how that's working. There's some questions about the turf fields and parking, but I'll wait till Mr. Lawyer is here to talk about that. And then, um, I attended the Church in the Park fundraiser called Welcome to the Table, uh, which was pretty interesting, uh, to do and see what's going on there. And then there's a, a little thing called Support Little Fighters. And this is, uh, a gal who has recently been treated for cancer, and when, when they go for their cancer treatments, a lot of times there's a toy or a little gift that they give them to kind of help them feel better. I think she is eleven or twelve years old. And somebody said, "What, what do you want to do? If you could do anything, what would you like to do?" And she said, "I would like to, to, um, collect some toys to take to, to the hospital to use for kids, uh, getting cancer treatments and stuff." So if I can give that to you, if we could put that on our website, that would be a great thing to do. And we have a dinner this week. Kaiser Community Dinner, um, the light, the Kaiser Times is going to be serving it. We're going to have a potato bar, so there we go.
Sounds very nice. All right, thank you so much, Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Even though I was gone, I do have things to say, because I want to say thank you to, uh, Kyle for covering the parks, Shaney for covering Kaiser United, and Dan for co, co, covering the neighborhood associations, so that I could, so that I could go play. As you know, November tenth is Veterans Day, which is obviously very close to my heart. Um, McNary High School holds, uh, Veteran Service Day on Veterans Day. Um, and it's, it's run by the cadets and, uh, the staff, and they treat us like royalty and feed us like royalty, and the culinary actually feeds us, which is-
At the school?
Yes, at the school, at McNary. They have a big, uh, assembly and everything, so it's really quite nice. So that's what I'll be doing on the tenth, other than we'll be here for long-range planning that night. Um, and I, oh, and one other thing, too, for veterans, I just want to say, any veteran and their family member, free dinner at the Oak on the ninth of November. That's all.
All right, fantastic. Um, just a couple of things to add. Um, I was able to join, uh, Commissioner Bethel as a guest speaker at Jemeckin Community College, their Leadership and Management Class. Uh, we spoke to the seniors, and people were like, "It's community college, they don't have seniors." Yes, they do. Community, Jemeckin Community College has bachelor's programs. So it was a real pleasure to visit with them, um, and with Commissioner Bethel on leadership for that class. Um, let's see, go down my list here. I attended the memorial for Jerry Howard that was held on the sixteenth. Um, he was a long time at the Kaiser, uh, Salem Kaiser Volcanoes, worked there for twenty years. A tremendous career in baseball and in business and in community, and he made a huge difference wherever he goes. Also, um, he initiated and ran the patriotic tributes at, um, Volcano Stadium for over sixteen years. These were nationally recognized. And through that, he was able to be a voice for Veterans Affairs at the legislature and on the national level. Jerry Howard is going to be tremendously missed, and he made a big difference for all of us in our community. I was able to go to the Chamber after Hours after Soaring Heights. This is one of our local businesses that continues to expand. They now have three homes here in Kaiser out of their five. They now have an office on River Road. And congratulations to Eric and Victoria for the work of their business, their service, to people who are leaving homelessness, um, and finding a safe space and great services through Soaring Heights. Uh, the book sale for our library was this past weekend. They had massive numbers of books and a great turnout. I'm looking forward to hearing, uh, what the result was from that sale. Um, I know that my granddaughter made off with a big bag of children's books, so, um, she's starting to learn to read. She's going to enjoy those tremendously. Uh, this afternoon, I got a chance to go out to the Optimum Learning Experience, which is at, uh, Forest Ridge Elementary. I heard the class projects from, um, students who had to identify a problem in the community, resources for solving that problem, and projects to get that done. And one project was selected to move forward with actually get, being able to do that project. They had projects about, um, feeding people in our community who are experiencing homelessness, uh, picking up trash and keeping our parks clean, and, um, working on safety in our community. And one of the teams had a wonderful project for improving their, um, the, the space up in the front of the, um, the school itself when kids aren't feeling well. It was a beautifully done project. The project that, um, was selected because it can go forward is for doing a big toy trash cleanup, and they want to work with the city on, um, maybe more recycling and trash cans and so forth. And, um, we felt that that was a project they will be able to do, partnering with our Parks Board and partnering with our environmental staff. So congratulations to all of the students. Very well-spoken, really thoughtful projects, and we're going to actually make this one happen. So very excited for that. Um, a couple of things coming up. Trashy Tuesday tomorrow, as was mentioned, five-thirty at Wallace House Park, Community Dinner. Um, and then a ribbon-cutting at Marion County Behavioral Crisis Center will be on the twenty-seventh. And that's pretty much it. Just a couple of other fundraisers. This is that time of year. And I would encourage everybody to make sure you're checking your calendar for events coming up. Kaiser Chamber has posted the events coming up for the holidays, especially for the Giving Basket Program. And everybody is welcome to get involved and take care of our families. Um, I do want to let folks know I'll be posting the If I Were Mayor contest for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and working with Ms. Bissett to get it on our website. Encourage students that you know, elementary school students, do posters, essays for middle school, and video essays for high schoolers. Stay tuned. The due date will be in the spring, so you have plenty of time. Kind of like the holiday card, I kind of jumped ahead on the due date for that. Early is better. And that is all I have for updates. Um, Agenda Input, we will meet in, um, work session next Monday night, October twenty-seventh, starting at six P M. to talk about sidewalk and gap repair programs. We will meet in regular session on November third, starting at six P M. On November tenth, the Long Range Planning Task Force will meet, uh, six P M. And then on November seventeenth, seven, six P M, regular session. That is all I have. Is there anything else that needs to be added to Agenda Input? All right, that is all I have. So, at this time, the Kaiser City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero, parenz two, parenz E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media shall be allowed to attend. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in this executive session. The city council, along with the city attorney, assistant city manager, economic development advisor, and city recorder may attend. The meeting will take place in the Public Works Planning Conference Room. At the end of the executive session, we will not be taking action, and we will be adjourning the council meeting. So at that, we will, uh, be heading into executive session. Thank you all. The time is seven forty-eight.